I think it's this one. Yeah, this is actually the one that's connecting. Not muted, but kind of your sound off.
Oh, yes. Okay. Yeah. Tracy McClark.
Councilmember Felton, here. That's the Louie, here. Moranti.
Here.
Nathan.
Yeah.
Morris, here. Herman Megan.
Here.
Roberts, here. Ronnie.
Here.
Sauer.
Here.
Wollo.
Yeah.
Tessa B. Kajak.
Here.
For.
All right. Can I get an introduction in a second to Spencer at the beginning of the minutes of the August 20th meeting? And place them on introduction in a second. Margaret and John. Oh, there's a favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And you want to pose? Okay. Next, motion carries. Committee reports, can I do an introduction in a second to place the meeting plates on file? One, two, one. Oh, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Before we proceed, I want to talk about two procedural issues that have come up recently, both of which have been subject to much unnecessary rigmarole. One is, of course, the next section, which is communications. Sharing communications with public at large is not a requirement. We do it in the interest of other government. But I realize I've made a mistake in the past because as you all know, we get sometimes three a day from certain citizens that we use them, and I have not been included in that. The fact is, if you include any, you must include all. So what we should be thinking about is, do we want to actually include communications in the public record? They are always subject to what? That goes without saying. But whether we put them, as we do here, into those communications that anybody can see is our task. Sure, if you want to take that now, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, on that communication issue, we get communications on all kinds of topics every day. I think that we could take an approach where if it's a communication about something that's on the agenda, the council can consider. So, uh, whatever. Then those we could share so the public can see what was shared. But we don't have to put everything in there, but if it's not, you know, it's on the agenda, if there's an item, if it's.
I agree with Margaret. I mean, we may have to, somebody can call me, because they turn, oh, this, I have a problem with something broke or.
I got stuff.
So I'm not going to just.
Yeah.
If it's dressed up, the council, you all definitely see.
Yeah, that's true.
So you know that.
No, we all get it.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is.
No, that's being addressed like just to me, but for the council, I will always share with the council.
Yeah, we, I know that. But what I'm saying is, if it's an issue like the retail law or something else, and the communication is specific to something that we're considering in public, I think that we could have a fairly straightforward approach that communications that are pertinent to something the council is discussing in this meeting will be the top priority. And then, and we get communications sometimes to all of us about things that are not on the agenda, like that, if you say, you know, it's got Pahal or whatever, we don't put all of those.
Which, I think that's a little too subjective. If someone has a communication and I tell them, it's like, if you want this to be included in the official minutes, then you send it to all 10 council members and Tom. And, you know, if they want, if they want it to be included, if we put any, every, any and every communication that's only subjective as to which ones then but if people really want it to be in the public record, I tell them to include, you know, all of them people.
Let's go to Crystal for some further clarity. Crystal?
So, yeah, so, um, Tom's absolutely right. There is no requirement. So the city of Hudson is a bit unique in how they handle their communications. By formally accepting communications that come to the common council and then publishing them on the city's website. It's not legally required. It is great for government transparency, but the city is entitled to put in place, the common council is entitled to put in place time, place, and manner restrictions. So like Margaret said, if you wanted to limit the communications that are going to be published on the website and formally accepted to what's just on the agenda, you can do that. If you want to set a procedure in place that says that if the public wants communication to go before the common council and be considered as, you know, part of the minutes, it can send it to the city clerk, you know, 24 hours before the meeting. You can do that. It's all on, on how the council wants to regulate this process. The only thing you have to keep in mind is that it has to be, it can't discriminate on content. Now, what I mean by that is you can absolutely say it can just be agenda items. That's fine, but you can't say, I only, I'm only going to publish things that are in favor of this law, and I'm not going to publish things that are in favor of that law. That's what I mean by contact discrimination. You can't do that. And it has to be applied equally to everyone. So those are the, those are the ground rules for all of this. I do think it's a bit extreme to have, if, if every time you're going to get communicated with the public, an individual council member, and you include that as part of, you know, your official communications and part of the minutes, it's going to get out of control pretty fast. So what I would recommend is either figuring out if you want to limit it to agenda items or communications that are submitted to the, to the city clerk within, you know, 24 hours before a meeting, things of that nature, to just get a little bit more control over it.
Thank you, Crystal. So we can, we have to decide it right now. The other procedural thing has to do with the topic of materials, which Crystal has written to you all as council members about. And I just want, once again, to make clear, I haven't asked anyone to accuse themselves, but they have decided that themselves. Correct. Let's redo the review themselves. Anyway, so now we can move along. Having said that, can I have an introduction in a second to receive the communications and put them on file? Margaret? And the one. Oh, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone to pose? Motion carries. Open, can you publish on in the files?
What, those are going to be fine? Did you say bills?
Yes, it's good. Can I get an introduction in a second?
Yeah.
Margaret, if you want. Questions? Can you make that a little larger? Questions, she councilmember? Okay.
Councilmember Felton, aye. Justin Looby, aye. Moranti.
Aye.
Nathan.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Herman Megan.
Aye.
Roberts. Ronnie.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Wollo.
Aye.
Tessa B. Kajak.
Aye.
Carrie.
We're going to have a presentation from Assemblage, which you all, council members, all request to run right away here. Wendy, you want to? That brother? And we hand it to, uh, five to Logan.
Hi, everybody. I'm Wendy Andringa, founder and principal of Assemblage Landscape Architecture, and I'm joined here by Jared Christak, who's on the team's call. I believe Jared here. Jared, can you say hello?
I am here. Good evening, everybody.
Great.
Logan, that's not displaying.
Can everybody see the screen on me?
Not really. It's also not displaying. Does it count show this?
That's our.
It says, you have to show this content. I'm sorry, I don't know.
Can you get turned a little bit more so it's facing through? We did. Able to. The hell? That'll be it. All right. Let's get started. So I'm here to talk about the New York Water Facility Design Permitting Grant that is. Next slide, please. And I'm going to start by giving a little bit of, oops, yeah, a little bit of history of the timeline of this project. So it all began in phase one, and all of this timeline to date has been D E C funded. So it started in 2016 with a partnership between Cornell University in D E C and Hudson to do a climate adaptive planning and design project with a landscape architecture studio at Cornell. And out of that came numerous designs for how the waterfront could address climate change and sea level rise. So then in phase two, 2021, Assemblage was awarded $125,000 grant from D E C for the Climate Adaptive Preliminary Design and Community Engagement of Henry Hudson Riverfront Park. And that resulting plan was adopted by council on November 15th, 2022. Now we're in phase three. That's what we're talking about today. And Assemblage and Lobella are to complete the design permitting and documentation for construction funding and future bidding. And then phase four would be that future construction. Next slide. And where we are now in phase three, I just want to, everyone to totally understand, hasn't, you know, followed along with the process. In February, D E C released a grant RFP for consultant teams like us to develop designs to shovel-ready documents for future bidding and grant funding streams. And D E C prioritized applications that offered a match. So we worked together with Hudson, Hudson's mineral aid at the time, Michael Hoffman, to identify the area that would be the most likely to be awarded funding under this competitive grant. And Mayor Johnson committed to providing a $75,000 match to the grant, which would enable our team to do the grant scope of work. Assemblage applied for the $200,000 grant with Hudson's match and to complete it. And D E C identified Hudson waterfront. They have been all along as a priority area, and they awarded the grant to us, to our team. So as a result, Hudson Council approved the map by resolution in May. And so what we're to do now is to get the final approval of it, of now that you have your contract in front of you. Next slide, please. And so as noted, D E C does, has, has been a big component of Hudson waterfront. We've been looking at Henry Hudson Riverfront Parks in phase two, how to make it climate adaptive, and also to provide amenities that the community wants. So it really, what we're doing really is, is in tandem with their Estuary Action Agenda goals, which are to create a vital river ecosystem, to create a thriving and resilient watershed, and also to connect people with nature. So what we're doing is hitting all of those points. Next slide, please. And just a little bit of existing context and adjacent projects that are very important in the sort of restoration of the south end of the park will support. Our project area is outlined in pink on the right, the far south end, it's about three acres of underutilized area. And it's directly adjacent to the Dunn Warehouse Development, which is in design right now and is going to become a community hub. Everybody knows it's a very great thing, and it's going to be the next big step in connecting, you know, Hudson's downtown to the water park. Also, the very street bridge replacement is going to invite people to travel to the park by the bike, by scooter, by foot. It's going to invite all kinds of new park builders who don't only have to go by car because it's over the tracks. And right now, the only at great crossing is at Broad Street, which is sometimes a little bit scary. Next slide. So this is the waterfront improvement area. This is our, the design. Where the area is outlined in white dash. And again, it's, it was selected by D E C because it's seen as a priority area. It has a lot of potential. It's fundable, it's the right scale and the right balance of economic, ecological, and community benefits. Next slide, please. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about the, you know, some aspects of the design. But before I want to just sort of frame how we got here in phase two through our community engagement process. That was the D E C funded year-long phase we did in 2022. And we spent a lot of time and a lot of rigorous meetings with the community. And so that amounted to six public, five public meetings, six focus groups, and five advisory groups with our, advisory meetings with our advisory group. So a lot of them were held on site. We did site tours. We did a survey as well. So we got lots of feedback, and we really considered the design community-driven in that respect. So it's a very important part of the, the planning process. Next slide, please. And another part of that, of course, the task was to address climate change and the future sea level rise. So photo on, photo below, you're seeing a 2022 flood event at the park. So this is becoming a regular occurrence. And what happens in the park floods now is you get a lot of flooding at the south end here. So what you can see here is Rix Point, high and dry, as, you know, in regular conditions. But when one of those floods hap, flood happens, it, it, that whole area gets, gets very inundated. And so that's only going to become more and more exacerbated as, as sea level rises. So that's the second portion we're going to. Next slide. I'm going to talk about, I'm going to try to be brief. I know you've got a lot to cover, but I'm going to talk about three different areas of the park design. The park's south end, Rix Point, and the slip for water access. Okay? Next slide. So here's an image of the south end of the park, where you see Hudson is split two. And this, these are the kind of comments that we heard during our community engagement. People really want more access to it. It's overgrown. People had a, you know, they have a hard time. A lot of people don't even know it's there, to be honest. So it's hard to access, and it has a lot of potential, right? To be a really well restored natural area. It's also where the food club has been leasing some, in the area for the NAC Center trailer. Here's just a few images of what, snapshots of what you see at the south end. The slip gets full of sediment and flotsam and jetsam. There's a lot of overgrown. It's just completely overgrown with vines, with ivy, and then there's the, the neglected railroad bridge, which remains and is kind of a natural hazard. So this area again has so much potential, and that's what D E C, and that's why they selected this area as a grant. Awarded. So what we're proposing to do is first and foremost, clean out the slip. And we need to get water, moving clean water, moving in and out. Right now, it's gets very clogged and it's very stagnant. And thus, that becomes a problem. So we want to create a sort of living edge to the, to the side. We want to get rid of the old crib walls that are rotting in place and, and create some flow in and out. So it can actually be used, it can be accessed, and then make a space for the NAC Center. In the top right, it's the education area. That is a place where the food club can leave in a trailer, it can be seen, and it's visible from the Dunn Warehouse. So this becomes a whole connectivity in that area. We clean up, we do, and also create a small water access point in the, the slip one, which is the secret slip, which a lot of people don't know about. And on the bottom right is just an image of what the natural playground, the character of Hudson's like. Next, we'll go to Rix Point. And everybody knows probably Rix Point as the park. But these are the comments that we heard. We wanted it to, the park to be more pedestrian priority. They wanted that area, which was spoken fondly of as the best place to go watch the sunset. You know, it's the great, the best place to hang out. It's beautiful. It's where everyone wants to go first. And unfortunately, it's dominated by, by cars, you know, for the disorderment. So next slide. Knowing that A, it's, Rix Point is going to be imperiled by rising waters soon, and also knowing that the community wants Rix Point to be pedestrian priority, what we're proposing is to raise the grade of Rix Point so that it's preserved well into the future for future generations. So we're thinking, that's, that's climate adaptive plan, thinking ahead. And then we're also turning it into a raised brackenall, which should have a shade tree on it and a fishing pier around the front. So lots of places to sit, and it's connected to the whole network of paths here. Next slide. And then lastly, the slip four area, which is the, the one that's directly next to the commercial dock. So we heard a lot that people wanted access to the water. They wanted to be able to touch the water. The only way you can, you can have contact with the water is if you rent a kayak, if you own a paddleboard or something like that. So people want just to be able to walk into it, wade into it, you know, get their feet wet. So the rickrack is really problematic. It does not allow people to access the water. So next slide, please. We're proposing a water access terrace. It's going to be an accessible terrace that would allow people of all abilities to, to sort of go down in the gentle grade and sit and be able to actually walk into the water at that point. So. Next slide. The rep order magnitude cost that was asked for at the last meeting, and this was derived from our preliminary design plan, is a million, including contingency. And that might seem high, that, you know, just looking at face value of what that is. And I'm going to walk through in a couple of slides how it's actually a really good number and is very fundable. So I'm going to talk about some funding options. So why we should do this space now, just a recap here. D E C has identified the waterfront as a priority for the $200,000 grant. We should follow with community visioning. That was a lot of effort that everybody put into it. We should support the Dunn Warehouse Development. That's going to become this amazing new community hub and has that area next to it. It would be great if it was improved and cleaned up. We should also position Hudson for 2026 construction funding streams, which I'll talk about. And also, this grant is provided on the condition that the match is honored and that we finish the work under a given time deadline. So funding sources from the state, and these were actually suggested by D E C. They had their I O Bs as, you know, options for this, this kind of project. One is the New York State Environmental Bond Act for Protecting Natural Resources from Climate Change. And I'm going to have to come a little bit closer to you just, but it, 4.2 billion is available annually for environmental and community projects, and it's been happening since 2022. The Green Resiliency Grant Program is for infrastructure, which is like nature-based solutions, rain gardens for managing stormwater, the kind of things that we're doing at the park for climate resilience. And there's 2024 would be an inaugural year, and 60 million was awarded. The Champlain Hudson Environmental Trust is for restoring and improving aquatic habitats. That trust was created to mitigate the impact of the Hudson Champlain Express power line that's going to be going down the Hudson River. And that's 117, 117 million trusts. And it's continuing for 35 years and awarded, awarded in 2023. Also, the Hudson River Estuary Access helps with impacts of flooding. And they're offering 150,000 per project, 2023, the inaugural year. And then the Green Innovation Grant Program for projects with green stormwater infrastructure, like what we're doing, 150 million to 10 projects in 2024. They've been doing this annually since 2011. Next slide. I also wanted to talk about federal funding opportunities and, and sort of share an example of another Hudson Valley City. I thought that might help. So I'm going to talk about Kingston. In, there is a grant that is now a part of the, the IRA that is offered by U S V O T, the Rebuilding American Infrastructure Sustainability and Equity of Resonance Race Grant Program. And it's for increasing the resilience of shorelines, developing waterfront access, bring infrastructure to improve aquatic habitat. And last year, Kingston was awarded 21.7 million for their leading waterfront project. So I, I highlight this as these things are attainable to Hudson Valley City. It just takes having design plans that are, you know, in the works or shovel-ready and having a plan in order to, in order to apply for these grants, and they're attainable. Kingston also got last year, or this year, a $500,000 urban and community forestry grant, just to plant trees. So not bad. So, you know, we can look into, we can work with your grant writer, we can keep our eye out on these and just meet, you know, we're, we're keeping our eye on what's ahead, and if we're ready for 2026 funding streams, these could be possible. Next slide. What are we going to do for this grant in phase three? It's a 16-month schedule, and we broke down the fee into the separate parts, so you can understand. And I'll go through all of them. First, we're starting with onsite investigations and sampling, and subcontractors will be doing that. And that's the environmental and geotechnical testing. That's 19,000, a little over. We have to do a site survey. That's almost 10,000. We have to do reports and applications. A lot of these are required by the grant law. And the engineers from landscape architecture will be doing those. There's a quality insurance plan, $10,000. You have to do five quarterly and one final report. Our permitting for the DEC and Army for joint application is five and a half thousand dollars. Environmental reports, we have to do two of them, 27,000. And the geo-geotechnical report, 16,000. And then the design. So the design, the cost estimating and the documentation done by the landscape architects and the engineers includes project management meetings and coordination, 17,000. That's a thousand per month. Draft engineering and implementation plan, that is the, the heavy with of what we're doing, right? That's creating the bin documents and, you know, everything that goes with it, specification. 104,000. And then after we get permits back, we do our final documents and that's a little over 50,000. Next. So with our team, you're getting landscape architects and engineers. So we are the, you know, the holders of the contract for the prime. So we're agreeing to project management. We are also doing drawings and specifications. We will be the liaison to DEC, to you, and also the key stakeholders in the project. Lobella Engineering is doing the environmental permitting, applications and meetings, civil engineering design and modeling. Also the environmental investigations, including Phase One and Phase Two ESA, sediment sampling, waste characterization sampling. Because we are on the, the site, we have to follow all guidelines for how we work with it. An ecological review of the site. Geotechnical investigation fieldwork, which should happen concurrently with the environmental. A geotechnical review and design for proposed features. A structural engineering design maybe for the pier and for any board rocks. Wetlands alleviation, so we aren't intruding into any protected areas. And also a site management plan and compliance specification again for, because the site has, there is a site management plan, we have to comply with it. And then an implementation plan and of course, the engineers' cost estimating. So at that, at that time, at the end of this, we will have the revised cost estimate. So right now, what we have is something that is eliminated. Next slide. The time sensitivity of this, I want to explain is as in, in the next two and a half months, we're going to be completing a quality insurance plan for DEC. We have to do that before we can do any testing, do anything onsite and it has to be approved. And they take time to approve it. So after that's approved, our site investigation team needs to get onsite to dig and, and do boring before the ground freezes. So it's very important that we do this before the end of the year. That's why we're feeling a little bit rushed. There's also a park stop date at the end of 2025, when this project has to be completed. And no, the grant remains will be paid after that point. Next slide. Then we have community expression of the support. We have received a letter from Caitlin Vaida from Dunn and Dunn. They're very much in support of this because it's directly adjacent. Operation Unite and, and the U Group has expressed support. And so has Seara Albonia and of course Hudson Food Club. I'd like to welcome anybody up if they want to say a few words of support at this time. Otherwise, we.
Let's, let's ask someone first.
Okay.
So right now, we have the $200,000. It's all about the money. It was 75,000, but you're asking a resolution, I think, the specific ones, you guys want the next five, right?
Yeah.
So it's going to be.
Yes, however, the, the five is an estimated amount. It will actually will be for the cost of permits. So if the permits are $1,000, it's not going to be five. Does that make sense?
Just asking. Margaret?
So back in May, we bought into the process and the board to have some merit and return the green interview. And that, at that time, it was for 75,000. So at that time, the permit fees didn't get included in your, in your estimate of what you need to come out. Is that, is that correct?
So there's some costs and permitting costs that are difficult to know before we get started. And I'd invite Jared to also jump in on this one as well, since Jared's like the permitting expert.
Yeah, so like Wendy alluded to, the, the permitting costs, you know, we're, we're certainly going to be working through the city of Hudson. But also a lot of the permitting work goes through both the US Army Corps and the New York State DEC. Since we're going to be working in the vicinity of the Hudson River. So once we know exactly what all of our impacts are, we're going to submit our permits to the Army Corps and DEC. And of course, the DEC has some, some changing wetland laws coming up as well. So unfortunately, it's, it's one of the, the issues with working in the Hudson region. It's just very difficult. DEC does not give you an estimate of what permit fees are. So what we did was we estimated sort of the worst case scenario. We don't expect that permit fees are going to be five grand. We expect that it'll be significantly less. But, you know, in talking with our permitting team, that's what they had relayed to me was, you know, I said, I needed worst case scenario and that way we could work backwards from there.
And okay, other level of permit fees. Will these budgets go up? Like, could it be like next May, so we're bringing another $5,000? You know, our goal is to make sure that we design this project that doesn't incur additional work. Doesn't incur, you know, extra, you know, investigations or anything like that. So it won't be in this. Right. And would you agree, would you agree, Jared?
Yes, absolutely. So the, the costs that we put together, you know, we have, as far as environmental site investigations go, we have our Phase One, which is a desktop review of the site. Our Phase Two, which we assume is going to be necessary because there is some contamination at the nearby manufactured, you know, former manufactured gas plant. And we tried our best to, to combine the costs as well. So doing a geotechnical investigation at the same time as the, the Phase Two, where we actually advance borings into the ground and, and take samples. And then we're looking ahead as well, right? We want to know exactly what our costs are going to be in construction. So we have some costs built in so we can sample any sediment that might be removed or any soil that's going to be removed. We already generally know where those areas are going to be. So we're going to be taking samples of those as part of our field investigations. So that way we know, you know, what, how, the level of contamination in the soil that's present and where we'll need to dispose of it offsite if that needs to occur. So we're kind of planning for a few different contingencies in the design phase here.
And what other, you said, other cities other than, did you design fixing or not?
We are working in Houston now, but not in Houston. Okay, yeah.
Robert, thank you. Two questions. So part of the permitting process that a flood, flood plain permit, this is in a letter?
Yes.
And, and the second is the state, we still don't know what the state's doing. Is there plans to integrate, we should talk about broad law, broad law and everything, to integrate whatever the state's going to do, integrate plans with the state's improvement?
You're talking about the project to the other side of it?
Right, if there's any integration.
And we talked about this before, I think back in May. We asked that question and the two are independent of each other.
Of the state, oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, there's maybe.
No, when I'm talking about integrations, I can talk about broad law, no connections, no integration. Two, two sites?
To between?
Yeah.
Not at this point. We're, we're starting in the south and hopefully in the north.
Okay.
So.
Well, there's private property difference too.
Yes.
Rich?
And a little to that is that, is the picture for the, in front of the gazebo that was flooding. But this project, will it help mitigate flooding of the gazebo area or is that not?
At this, no, none of this, but we see that as also a very, a very fundable project that should, or, or, you know, in concert with provincial dog improvements as well. And there's a hardened edge there. So it's a little bit of a, a different animal from that. You know, there's a steel bolt head on the south side of it. So that's a, a different sort of thing to deal with.
Yeah, it's actually, tend this into what my question is. Think during the initial planning phases and the, the community input sessions, if I remember correctly, the plans that were shown included the area where the gazebo is, along with the, the parking lot that's on the south, those were all in scope. What drove the decision to not include that? Was that from the, the space recommendation or funding sources or is that kind of driven by one?
The main, the main driver was literally not moving the road back. So Water Street in your plan was moved back towards the Amtrak corridor. And.
Those coming in?
We were doing this grant, it was not, that was not desired to grow. So, so, and we also wanted to leave that upper area, which is used as an informal parking deck right now. We wanted to maintain that.
As a parking.
That's it. All right, thank you.
Jared?
Thank you. You mentioned soil testing, site testing. Let's take worst case scenario, you find something there, it needs to be moved offsite. How is that going to impact the project and the costs associated?
We're going to try not to have to move anything else.
But worst case scenario, we have to move something.
I'm going to invite Jared.
Sure. Yeah, no. So if we encounter something that, that worst case does need to be moved offsite, that's not going to affect schedule, costs, timeline, anything is part of this phase of the project. What that would impact would be construction, but we could plan for it. So the idea here is that we'll be able to understand what those costs would be. And we would include that as part of, you know, any construction phase work that would be done. So, you know, that, those are all things that the DEC is, is pretty readily happy to, to fund. So as long as we understand what's there, where it needs to go, what kind of quantities we're dealing with, that, that's how it would be handled. So it'd end up in the engineer's estimate for the construction.
Margaret?
Yeah, so thanks, Jared. My understanding, like from our conversation last week, this is, this $200,000 plus 75 is to get to the point where you have a project planned and shovel ready, which would include, Gary, I think, issues around, you know, identify any problems that need to be resolved, et cetera. And so then the grant that we will go after to actually implement would have to include soil mitigation, whatever the target would be, that's the project that we'll go for, right? Am I all right?
Thank you. Okay. One other question. So with, I love the idea, but we're running next to Cala Russo. What is the impact of that on what we're looking to do?
I would say that as long as we stay on the city's side of the fence and where there's no, no issue. He actually participated in our engagement meetings and, and was very reasonable as a neighbor. So I don't really see this, these improvements as being impacted by what is doing.
So their normal operation would not have, over the course of time, a negative impact on what we're looking to do on our side of the fence?
No, in fact, we're trying to restore a bridge that's, would create an alternative access point. So people would have to walk along the service road, his service road to get to the south end. So that is huge.
Rich, the grants that we're going after, are these construction grants? Would the city be required to put any other money upfront?
They're all different and I think I'm not an expert on every single grant. But they, what I do know is that they probably have like design or, or a consultant to help manage the project and do CA work baked into them. They're, I do know that the Rave Grant is actually a reimbursable grant. So, you know, expenses have to be made and they're, they're reimbursed.
And reimburse grants are going to, instead of actually putting in, running out of time.
So going through the time period. By the end 25, you're going to finish your designs. And then you're going to give them to the grant writers, right? And then we're going to start writing grants.
Yeah.
By the end 26, we'll be sending grants out. So hopefully we'll get the money by the end 26 and then we can start 27.
Yeah.
The 3 million, is it for now or for the 27? Estimated possible 3 million.
Well, it's estimated, it's, it's sort of a preliminary estimate, but that would be construction. But it's, it's for later, for later, for later, for 2020.
So it goes to go up.
Yeah, things do escalate. And we also, there's some things we don't know yet about site, like, you know, what if we have to, you know, remove some bill, you know, things. Thank you.
Can we move this? Hold on, I gotta introduce you in half a second. Margaret, can you, can you? Do you want to vote?
Do we have to talk about the issue that Heather brought up? Where in order for people to take, you're going to pick your last topic up?
One minute. You better now. Thank you for mine. Go, go, go.
Councilmember Belton?
Aye.
Desaludie?
Aye.
Marancy?
Aye.
Nisan? Morris? Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts? Grohny?
Aye.
Sar?
Aye.
Wolo?
Aye.
President Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie?
Thank you, Randy.
Before, before we leave this, sorry, just before we leave, Wendy, just before we leave this. For some reason, it wasn't possible to display this presentation on the computer. So the members of the public were texting me that they couldn't see it. Could we get a copy of this that could be posted in the city website? We have it, it's already, it's already on the document, Paul.
It's not in the document, but it's just.
If we, okay, great, great. So if we can post that, so those of you in the public who are unable to, to see this, it will be posted so that you should see the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving along. I think the resolutions from last week. The commission of deeds. A way Paul wrote.
Councilmember Belton, yes, immediately. Marancy?
Aye.
Nisan?
Aye.
Morris? Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts? Grohny?
Aye.
Sar?
Aye.
Wolo?
Aye.
President Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie?
The next resolution, I'm working with Mayor, Chair Skew. Is it first, is it two research officer? A way for that to move.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Desaludie?
Aye.
Marancy?
Aye.
Nisan? Morris? Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Grohny?
Aye.
Sar?
Aye.
Wolo? President Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie?
Now, the next resolution is to authorize approval of MOA, memorandum of agreement of communication with the representative of our, our. Introduced this last week. Do you want, you think this is an executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have to ask you, you're going to read temporarily, it shouldn't take too long. Oh, sorry, I need a motion too. They want the executive session for, to discuss personalities. Devon and Parker. A little better, if I understand.
Aye.
And Jack, Logan, Dan. What?
He's working on it. He's working on it.
Yeah, we're stopping recording. Okay, it's starting to be, I guess, really, a lot of people in there. He believed him. It's. Yeah, I think that's good. Okay.
Mom, you're still recording?